I have so many good things to say about you, my team members. Compliments.
I would like to call this meeting of the Narragansett Regional School District's School Committee to order. We actually do have some special guests here with us tonight to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. I'm not doing it this evening, so if all our special guests from Templeton Elementary School, who would like to lead us on the pledge, would like to come down front here and face the camera, or face the flag, really, I should say face flag. Then we will let you all come down and then we will stand up and join you. Very well done, very nicely spoken, very clear, excellence. Our Templeton Elementary School friends will be joining us a little bit later. We'll do some inter questions for another agenda item. But until then, I will give us through the rest of the agenda. So first of all, to remind me, reminder, this meeting is being livestreamed and recorded and will be posted to YouTube. And we have some meeting minutes to get through. So we will start with our October meeting minutes. I would entertain a motion to approve the meeting minutes of October 16th, 2025 as written. Motion by Danielle, second by Bill. Any questions or comments about those? Seeing none, all in favor? Opposed, abstained, and I say yes, so that is unanimous. I would further entertain a motion to approve the meeting minutes of November 6th, 2025 as written. Motion by Danielle, second by Peter. Any questions or comments on those minutes? Seeing none, all in favor? Opposed, abstained, and I say yes, so that is unanimous. This evening, we do have bills of payroll. Those are attached for anyone who wants to review them. I would entertain a motion to accept those bills of payroll warrants as presented. Motion by Danielle, second by Bill. Any questions or comments on those bills of payroll? Seeing none, all in favor? Opposed, abstained, and I say yes, so that is unanimous. Now, we have our student rep here this evening, and we've actually had a little bit of a change. Dr. C, can I let you introduce Kelly Taylor?
I would be honored to introduce Miss Kelly Taylor. I'm gonna read a lot of things about her, and she would like me not to do that, but I'm going to anyway. So Kelly Taylor, the junior here in Narragansett Regional High School, who loves social studies, history, and English this year. Kelly has enrolled in AP European History, AP English Language, AP Biology, and pre-calculus honors this year, and has previously taken Project Lead the Way in engineering and principles of engineering, and principles of engineering courses. Needless to say, Kelly is working extremely hard while making time to engage in a great deal of civic service. And Kelly is our Project 351 Ambassador, class of 23, and is active in the Worcester County Sheriff Lou Evangelist's Warmer Winter Coat Drive for multiple years running. That was your project, wasn't it Kelly, when you were 23, was the coats? Was there a rank for your project 351?
No, I think that was separate.
Oh, okay. You may have seen Kelly's work if you've passed by at one library. She takes tribute each year to both the heroes and victims of 9/11. Kelly is also active in yearly food drives and has worked with the organization Cradles to Crayons. Most recently, two proud accomplishments, reaching the level of cadet in Girl Scouts, and of course, securing her license this past June. Kelly was elected to this role by her peers for her civic service and trap worth as a Narragansett Regional High School's school advisory council member. So Chair and Board, I formally introduce, proudly introduce Miss Kelly Taylor.
Welcome. We're very excited to have you here. Actually, Peter, since I left, used to sit in that seat and then was later elected to sit up here at the table. So great things to come, sure. Can't wait to hear what you have to share with us tonight.
For the middle school, grade five welcomed our local veterans on 11/7 for a Veterans Day program. Students made cards for them and shared a class recitations of several patriotic poems, and they gave them some of their Halloween candy, I'm sure very politely. Students are in the second round of creating academic goals for quarter two, and they're also working on their attendance goal with an attendance rate of 96.3% for quarter one. Upcoming events are a pep rally, a student of the month assembly, a perfect attendance for quarter one assembly, and fall sports recognition on November 26th, a grade six movie night on December 4th, and a grade five holiday social on December 5th. For the high school, 204 high school students, grades eight to 12, were on principal's list of honorable for their report cards. Niasse visited last week, New England Association of Schools and Colleges. They were here on 11/13 and 11/14, and during their time, they spoke to administrators, teachers, students, and parents. Fall sports are winding down or completed, and the football team has been performing great to use to move on. The student council has been running a food drive for the Templeton Food Pantry, and it wraps up tomorrow. And powder puff football, on November 18th, we held the annual fundraising powder puff football game. The seniors beat the juniors 24 to 19, and the boys cheerleading put on a great show. And Dr. Kazma asked me to mention he was a wonderful referee.
You weren't supposed to mention that.
For upcoming events, parent-teacher conferences will be held next Monday and Tuesday from 11:30 to 2:15, and then 5:30 to 7:30 PM Monday night. And then also on Monday night, the counseling department will be putting on their FAFSA night for students and parents. There'll be a Thanksgiving pep rally on Wednesday, November 26th, and the theater group will be putting on a performance of the play That Goes Wrong on December 13th. Today, Mr. Yang asked me to mention that I went to a meeting for Central Mass Regional Student Advisory Council. He said that nobody's been in a few years, so I should mention it. This is a subdivision of the state's advisory council which empowers students and gives them a voice in the betterment of schools. I attended today to create our plan for the year, and my group's goal will be to better student mental health and improve student-teacher engagement.
Thank you so much for your part, and we're looking forward to it. And just so that you're aware, we're happy if you can stay. We understand if you can't, because we know that students have lots of commitments. And of course, if you stay, if there's something that is particularly interesting to you, you feel like you'd like to give a student perspective on, we always welcome that. Thank you for coming. All right, moving on to our next introduction. Dr. C, I will hand it back over to you again.
Madam Chair, of course, we have our wonderful guests, the TES and the wonderful Ms. Bustin, who's the principal at Templeton Elementary School. I have absolutely no idea what the new mascot is going to be, so I wait with you with bated breath to see which of those wonderful choices we have chosen, we have voted, so I leave it to you.
I'm Rob Alker, and student council representatives, bring your paper down.
Right, so I'll do these that way, because.
I am thrilled to introduce you all tonight to our student council, our newly appointed student council representatives from third and fourth grade. Just gonna go ahead and say their names so they can give a wave so that you all know who they are. So first up, we have Bryce, James, Kaden, Cole, Austin, Ben, Jonathan, and Carrie. We are here today to share some really exciting news with our community. So we'll start with Bryce, go ahead.
Good evening, members of the school committee. Thank you for giving us the opportunity to share some special news here tonight.
This year, our fourth grade earned classes completing a project to design a brand new mascot for Templeton Elementary School. Every fourth grader created an original mascot.
TES staff helped to pick the top 20 designs, and the student council voted to select the top five all students in grades through the 3K through four. The chance to vote for their favorite mascot. Every student had one vote, and we reached 100% participation.
We love seeing our creator of fourth graders win. Some mascots were shitty, some were silly, we love what truly means, but every design sells school pride.
What's going on, Mrs. Vespasian? Captain, the votes, the votes. Lots of excitement as we win in the results.
And tonight, we are proud to officially be announced the winner of the mascot with 46% of the votes.
The TES eagle. The eagle represents strength, courage, and confidence, qualities we see every day in students at Templeton Elementary School. Along with our new mascot, we also selected a brand new school slogan that represents who we are and what we believe.
Our new school slogan is "We Fly High." We fly high in our learning, our friendship, and our school pride.
Excellent, now everybody.
This is the count, I mean.
So this one won, so I will say this one won by about 10%. Like, the next closest was like in the first, third.
Yeah, I understand, it looked like you.
We're currently working with DW Designs to create t-shirts based on the design that was created by one of our fourth graders, and we'll be selling those shirts. Thank you for having us. Thank you so much for having us. Yes, we especially love to have guests that are students. We really appreciate you coming out tonight. And we appreciate the parents for providing all of the rides. Thanks, everyone. You're more than welcome to stay, but I know there is dinner and other things to get home to. So we'll give you all just a moment to gather things and. Thank you, everyone, for your patience as we let them exit the room. It's always a little bit of a hum. So there's no one from the hall tonight, so I'll do it right there. And NDEA did not make it this evening, so we'll look forward to their updates later. MSBA project update, the roof that we are living and breathing. And I have a special request from a certain child to let you know they saw you on the roof today.
But that's only the first time, is everything on the road. Yes, so I was gonna say that for last. So since we last met in session, we, Templeton had their fall town meeting. So that passed, that meeting. Okay, so on to the ballot, which I'll get to. I'm trying to go with chronic order here, a lot of order. In the, you'll see, it'll be on December 3rd that Phillipston will take up the roof project for a special town meeting as well. And it appears that they will not need a ballot vote, given that they have plans to, when I say fund it out of pocket, they're not going to need to do a debt exclusion or something to that effect. Again, I think that'll be worked out at the town meeting, but we don't have food. There's no, there's no discussion about setting up a ballot vote or anything. So what we've been doing a lot of is speaking with the town of Templeton, because the ballot vote needs to happen, one. Two, it needs to pass to then initiate all the paperwork that goes with proving to the MSBA that all of these things have happened in the correct order, with the correct language. And we have until the end of January 27th or 29th to send in all the required documentation to really just kind of kick. So in between all those little tidbits, what we've done is, well, we've met with the TES PTO just to give them the points. And FAQ that we have completed, this will be messaged out to in all the appropriate ways to the public. We're already in contact with, again, Templeton, we want to talk to TCTV, about how exactly can we get this type of information, not only on TCTV, but on the cable affiliate, I guess, Phillipston as well. Why I was on the roof was the fact that we did a video. Not a funny video or a snow day video. It was actually kind of scary up there, wasn't it? So, but just to show folks, I guess, in real time, some of the issues that were reported in the report. So the flashing, the non-existence defective or just falling off, the scaling of the brick, you know, the leaking inside the building, the membrane or the roof membrane which is separating. Well, actually, no, it's the insulation that has sunk because it's now defective because water is seeping. So we were able to show the cooling all over, ponding, ponding throughout the roof. And it was actually getting big up there. It's one thing to hear about the ponding issue, but it's a whole, it's very different when you're up there and you're able to see the entire, say, the entire scale of the roof, and you see these ponds of water that have been up there. The last thing that rains three days ago. And water is only, by code, supposedly only supposed to pool up there, pond, no more than 24 hours. Well, there's one part of it where I'm standing in about an inch of water, and it's three days later. So we just wanted to highlight some of the easy things to point out about this is what they're talking about in this report. And we are planning to roll that out hopefully to TCTV, et cetera, to kind of, well, to show them the actual issues that were reported. Short of that, and again, I'll look again and read. You know, we've been in touch with bond council, making sure that the language that we have fits, of course, bond council's definition of what it should say. We've been in a lot of contact with both towns and the MSBA in our opinion. So a lot, we probably have done nothing but honestly, this, yeah, since town meeting, quite frankly, we have, it's been all, it's been all of, all the time trying to work through some of these.
We did have a request from Phillipston to, they asked us if it was possible to pay their portion of funds. Nobody seems to be able to give a straight answer when I asked bond council if that was something he'd heard of. He said it's been coming up a lot, but he referred us to our regional agreement, to however it is spelled out in the pageant agreement. That's probably how you should move forward. If it doesn't say to pay upfront, he suggested you could get into an agreement with both towns to do something differently. That's still all kind of off the menu.
Relatively, just to add to that, I know that another thing that was stated is that for capital improvements for the middle school and high school buildings specifically, it does say that the split is dependent on the student ratios for any given year. And so while that is typically 85-15, one of the challenges with accepting the payment upfront is if those ratios were supposed to change year to year, and there's an ongoing loan to pay back that that complicates how that happens. So that was the bond agent's concern, was that specific statement in the 1977 regional agreement, which is the one that we default to.
The language in the 1977 version in terms of capital projects and how they are funded, I think almost word for word, but for the most part, to be the 2004, in truth, honest, is valid. So onward, it really is about the next step, which is next week in Phillipston. Then we will go on to the next step, which is then to make sure that we set up the ballot vote. And we're looking probably, it just, they're going to talk about, they're gonna talk about this, the date and ranging all of that at their next select board meeting. But Monday night, which we may actually be in visit to. But right now, tentatively, it looks, if Tuesday, January 6th, looks like a day that would fit. No basketball games, so we can't move it from gyms because that's a whole process with your voting center, even though it's insane, building. So we're working around a few of those things we did talk to.
There's some timetable that the Templeton, they have to follow in order to meet the requirements that they need. So that looks tentative, so hopefully it will get finalized Monday night.
Would that provide sufficient time if the vote decides to get the paperwork in to MSBA?
Yes, because we technically have until the 27th, so whichever one is staying on. Obviously, the OPM would like it sooner than later because people will kind of wait in on hold to receive where the work needs to be done, but we will take what we can get.
Yes, we should have that by the town. It's a process with that, but it's not something that's hard or difficult to do as soon as they will have to get on right off the bat.
Any other questions about MSBA roof pounds?
I have a quick question where the Board of Selectmen and Finances Committee is meeting next week in Phillipston. And the uncertainties of the capital projects and the regional agreement and things like that, because we don't know exactly what we're going to do. I mean, they're gonna meet and discuss things, but should someone go to that meeting to educate them on what we just talked about with the bonds and?
That's already been shared with them.
Okay, good.
So we, AMR has been in active communication with Adam Montane to let him know what the situation is. Part of the challenge is that we can get our information from our bond advisor, but they also have to get their information from their town council. And so it's a little, you know, so certainly if they want us there or if that's helpful, we can figure out what that looks like. And at the same time, we will be repeating the information that has already been provided because we are certainly not experts on any of that. Any of that. So yeah, so that's the challenge is.
So good news, good news that the OPM, through the OPM, the language that they have on the war in Phillipston was exactly the language that the MSBA requires. So and we know that that was fair.
On Friday 26th, we.
Nothing really is, just another 20 years, so. And we know, and there's money for you to start sharing things, and one day at a time.
One day at a time, okay. This is Spanish, just before, right back to.
I hope to do those together quick. And mostly roof. Probably the only thing to update is all of our grants are finally approved. Now we can start spending them, and our rural aid number did come in. I'll tell you, I don't have the exact number, I think it was $276,000, which is about $100,000 less than last year. But we'll get it, we're gonna just keep lovingly adding our projects and our repairs that are needed, especially at the middle school. And we'll go from there with it.
Yeah, and I did see an email come up from MASC today asking for, or made an effort across the school committees in Massachusetts to push for rural aid to be fully funded because it's so important for schools to be able to, I mean, rural aid is part of what helps us to address capital improvements without having to go with a pound. Yes, we have to just chip away at them slowly, as anyone have to do, they're taking care of their own home. But not having the funding of rural aid definitely impacts what we can, but yeah. Any questions on rural board or grants or rural, I cannot say rural. Moving along, Ms. Super Chair, I'll hand it over to you for our curriculum and instruction, and thank you for joining us here.
You're welcome, thank you. Three things to update the committee on tonight. The first, attached in your packet is an updated version of our district's curriculum review and management plan. This is a six-year cycle that's been in place in the district, and so we have near to the end of that cycle and that's planned. And so working with our administrative team and our teacher leader team on getting some feedback and input, we've revised, reviewed, reviewed and revised that plan. What you'll see is that that six-year cycle. What you'll see is that that six-year cycle starts off with, you know, data analysis, evaluation and sort of setting a stage to plan. Anytime we're either selecting or reviewing or revising curriculum. We've also worked this six-year cycle, Anne Marie and I have talked quite a bit about making sure that our major curriculum purchases are not all falling in the same year. So we've also staggered some of our contracts in the last few years so that our new cycle would support the financial aspect of purchasing or renewing subscriptions for curriculum as well. And then lastly, one of the things that we did update in this plan is in the implementation, reflection and revising phases, we embedded some resources that our district's admin committee had worked on last year around bias review for instructional materials, including texts, videos, things like that. And so we feel strongly, have a strong plan in place. We have a lot of work ahead of us when it comes to curriculum review, curriculum management. But we have a strong team and we feel like this plan will help us to do that in a really strategic and outlined plan. Any questions about that? So moving on, the next thing I wanted to provide information to the committee on and an update on is our district learning walkthroughs. And so I think it was the end of last year, we talked about this, this process, but essentially our learning walkthroughs are a process that we go through as a district three times a year. It's an opportunity for teachers and administrators to team up and to walk through classrooms to collect data on instructional practice trends that we see. We do this in relation to a focus of inquiry that we set each year. That focus of inquiry is directly tied to our district's strategic initiatives and our professional development plan as well. And so when we look at this here's focus of inquiry. It is around standards-based instruction that is universally designed and makes content accessible and engaging to all students. And so what you'll see here is a thread with the work we did in the previous year around universal design for learning across our system. And also an intentional focus for accessibility and engagement for all students, which is part of our new strategic plan. We have six indicators that we look at when we go into classrooms. We look for evidence that exists around the use of learning targets and success criteria, which is an instructional practice to use district-wide to really focus on how we communicate learning expectations with students. We also focus on flexibility of instructional materials, flexibility of instructional practices, diversity of learning practices to support about learner variability in classrooms, student ownership, which includes voice of choice for students in the instructional process, and then the use of formative assessments and feedback. And so we do have a rubric that outlines specifically what that looks like for each of those indicators. And so teams of teachers go through and they're collecting data based on what they're hearing or seeing for the time they're in classroom. It's a non-evaluative process. It's very much about data collection. That data is then brought back and teams go through a process to kind of distill that down for, let's say they go through twelve or fourteen classrooms over the course of a learning walk process. And so when we distill that data down, we do a focus on these indicators and we create patterns or trends that we're seeing in classrooms. And then we use that to also say, you know, what are our celebration points? And then what are some focus areas specific to this building or our district as a result? So we do those in each of the three schools. One thing that's great about that process is it really supports collective teacher efficacy and teachers getting together and really seeing and talking about teaching and learning unique to our district. It's also an opportunity for teachers to engage and sort of intentional planning for instructional next steps in their building. And it's not always teachers in the same building. So for example, we have a learning walk, a walk through at TES. Sometimes middle or high school teachers participate. Likewise, we're at middle or high school, teachers from other buildings participate. So it's really meant to build, you know, consistency across the district around instructional practice as well. So with all of that said, I would like to share some highlights from our data with you so you can get a sense of some of the great work that's happening in our classrooms and some of the areas that we're leaning into straight as well. So at TES, our top two trends that we saw in classrooms rooms were related to the use of learning targets and success criteria and the use of formative assessments in classrooms. And so we saw a lot of teachers who were not only posting and stating learning targets at the beginning of the lesson, but they were engaging students and utilizing them throughout the lessons in the classroom. Additionally, there were focus walls that were helping to build essential learning and conceptual understanding as students went through a unit or a period of time where they're focusing on one concept or content area. And then additionally, there were a lot of exit tickets being utilized and a lot of teachers providing ongoing feedback to students during either individualized or small group check-ins throughout classrooms. A focus area that TES is leaning into moving forward is opportunities to provide more student-to-student discourse. So opportunities for students to talk with each other to help develop conceptual understanding. They're using very, like they have a venue of, of protocols they're using to help teachers embed practices in their classrooms. They're doing things like turn-in talks, think pair shares, which are structured opportunities for students to engage in conversation one-on-one or in a small group. They're utilizing four corners activities and there's, there's a whole list of them. It's fun, catchy names for the littles. Our middle school is seeing strengths around the use of instructional materials and tasks that are directly aligned, aligned to their lessons. And they're also seeing strength in terms of learning targets and success criteria applied to standards. At the middle school, one of their focus areas is leading into the use of formative assessments. And so this is actually going to be driving the professional development that they're most, they're holding for their teachers in December. They're going to be focusing on the design of formative assessments, the use of them, and then how we're actioning to address individual needs or patterns and trends across the class. And then at our high school, we saw a lot of strength in the flexibility of instructional materials for students. We saw a lot of graphic organizers. We saw a lot of scaffolded notes to support note-taking strategies. And we also saw a lot of practices that are very variable in that really had students be able to bring their own experiences into their classrooms and or hear from the experiences of other students. The high school overachievers here, they have two focus areas that their teams leading into after our learning walk. The first is wanting to strengthen the use and be more consistent with the use of learning targets and success criteria. And the second, similar to TES, is leading into opportunities for student discourse. And they're using the catchphrase, less teacher talk, more student talk, to sort of focus more on having students do heavy lifting in classrooms and really be processing some of your concepts. We are going to be doing our learning walks as we have in the past three times a year. We just did them in October. We're going to do them again in December and then in March. We like to do them a little bit earlier than we do our benchmark assessment windows because it gives us time to plan for them professionally or focuses for staff meetings or teacher leader meetings, common committee meetings. And so we do do those a little bit earlier in the year because we want to have the time to plan and see the impact of those. We've been strengthening our data practices to be able to also look at our trends year to year to see where we've had some strength in growth as well. Questions about our learning walkthroughs?
Is the, is the data presented a pretty consistent approach or is it in whose sir?
Yes, yeah, no. It's, it's pretty consistent in our high school. We're seeing similar patterns year by year here in our high school. We have had the same focus of inquiry for the past two years around universal design for learning and access. And so in the other buildings, no, where we've been seeing some strength, that's been sustained. And then what we're seeing for areas of growth vary a little bit. So for example, maybe three years ago, at Templeton, we were focusing a lot on instruction materials and instructional routines, and now we're seeing those apparently stronger. Now we're focusing more on student discourse as we saw. So we've seen some shift and some variation, but it's not consistent across the district. It varies school to school.
Any questions? Great. Thank you so much for that update.
You're welcome. Last update, more data, because, you know. Would you be a update or do you have data?
It's unobvial though, somehow. It's a refreshing break.
So this last one is, is sort of an external data set, but it applies to internal data. So the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education in the state has just earlier this week started releasing publicly staff data for schools and districts. And so I want to notify the committee because you hear buzz about this. It is brand new. And we've been working through this as an administrative team to kind of unpack our preliminary data to see what was going to be reported. And we've notified our NDA folks as well. And so essentially, what's being reported at the state level is information at the district level and then at the individual school level, broken down into three categories of data. As you can see on the screen, data is reported for all staff, administrators and teachers. All staff includes administrators, teachers, support staff, educators, administrative assistants. Yeah, yeah. There's two reporting categories that the state is reporting out on. The first is, as you can see on the screen, the attendance rate. That's what you reported out as a percent present over the course of the year. And then the second is the average number of absences again over the course of the year. So the data that's released right now is for the twenty-four, twenty-five school year. This is now going to become an annual report that the state will publish when accountability data for school districts comes out. They're reporting it out of an ongoing push to have transparency and their data collection processing, also because there is a statewide push around attendance right now. You've probably heard TV commercials or radio commercials about your presence is powerful. That's the slogan for the state right now. We're up attendance. And so this is a step towards also giving transparency around staff data since we are going through that now for student data. What the state is not reporting, and previously they were going to report, but I'm getting feedback from multiple folks. They pulled back and they are not reporting out any staff data for chronic absenteeism of staff, which is ten days or more. And they are not reporting out on any disaggregated data for staff. They're not disaggregating for any specific sectors of staff. The, if you were to go on our district or on our public profile page and look at this information and sort it by school, you will not see data released for administrators at the school level because the state is not reporting any group that has fewer than six staff. And so for us, we have two staff numbers, two administrators, excuse me, in each of our schools. So that's not a reportable category. One thing I do want to make note of because there isn't, if there's one error in our data that was publicly released, we do, we did not last year have fifteen administrators. We actually have fourteen administrators. But when, when Ms. Altisak left, she, she, we had a recording error. Her attendance continued to get collected for a few weeks. So she was, it didn't impact our attendance rate or our absences, but she did get counted in the attendance count. We fixed the error on our end, but it did end up in the state report. So that is one error that we do have here. So people look at this and say fifteen administrators. We actually have fourteen.
In this of the record, this year we have thirteen. So I just want to make sure we go through that because sometimes that gets lost in the, in the wash. So.
Based on the average number of absences, are they, am I making the correct assumption that they are not, that they're considering any absence, including like an FMLA or a paternity leave or a maternity leave?
Yes, yeah, no. So yes, all of those ones that you mentioned are counted in absenteeism. So anyone out on FMLA or on maternity. The only number that is not counted in that count are, are made contracted vacation days, of which administrators have, teachers and other staff do not. So any, if an administrator takes a week off in the summer as vacation days, for example, that is not counted in the absences because those are not counted as contracted days because they're part of family.
And I say that because, you know, with the average number of absences between being fourteen or fifteen, what that's not accounting for is that if someone is out for maternity leave for anywhere between, was it three to six months now? That's going to skew that to a higher number. So it should not be a conclusion from looking at this data that most of our staff are out fifteen days in a year, but that rather that those FMLA, maternity leave, paternity leave are going to naturally skew those numbers higher. And so that makes it difficult to see what is real absenteeism versus, yeah.
A couple of points. One, absolutely. The, there was an article, I believe, if it wasn't the Globe, it was the Herald this morning that pushed back on that. Exactly, in terms of FMLA leaves for your, for a family member or yourself. But the other part of it, which is, I think, not as widely known, is that staff members attendance is public record and whether, whether or not they were in, in the time that they took. So if they were on FMLA leave, it would say simply FMLA. That's not a, that's not a HIPAA, right? It doesn't explain why. If it's sick or personal, whatever, it would if someone were to request that and show. But we've had over the, gosh, the ten years that I've been here, we've had one or two public record requests. For my, this actually is interesting, but, but that is public record. You know, that's, if you read the article, it's some kind of back and forth right now. The commissioner is taking a, let's see what this, what this looks like. That's what he said in the actual article. They're not making any judgments. They're not making any decisions. They just want to see, okay, here's this information. Let's, let's talk about it. Let's see what it, what it is.
It's a bad metric to look at. I just think it's a confusing metric to look at if you're making a conclusion that the, you know, average staff member has fifteen plus days absent, right? So I think, I think knowing that it includes folks that are out for an extended period is helpful. So.
Our team's big question, which we, we have not yet, we didn't that inch yet, is what is the state's average? Because we know this is our data, but we are really eager to pull and then look at that now in relation to what the state averages for all of those categories and those two metrics and how we compare to the state average, same way we do for the current.
Absolutely, yeah. Any other questions around this new metric? Thank you so much.
All right, we do have some surplus items this evening. Susan, is this, is this you?
Sure.
We have some textbooks, speaking of curriculum review. We have some textbooks specific to our health curriculum that are quite outdated that include, you know, some outdated nutritional information and meal planning that we are looking to get a vote for this part.
Excellent. So I would entertain a motion to accept the listed items as surplus. There are ninety-four various outdated high school books and various IT materials. And the list is available for your peers. So should you look? Motion by Danielle.
Second.
Second by Peter. Any questions or comments about those ninety-two, ninety-four surplus items? Seeing none, all in favor? Opposed, abstained, and I say yes. So that is unanimous. We do also have our second review of the IKF graduation requirements. No, no changes from last time. So I'll get a motion on the table. And if there's anything further to discuss, we'll bring it up. So I'd entertain a motion to accept the following for second reading as presented IKF graduation requirements. Motion by Danielle.
Second.
Second by Bill. Okay. Any questions or comments on those? I know we had the first reading during our, during our October meeting. So it's been a minute and I don't believe that there were any further needs or changes discussed during the latest policy or operations meeting. Okay. So seeing no questions, all in favor? Opposed, abstained, and I say yes. So that is unanimous. We will adopt the policy and get our, get our the policy manual updated. Words hard sometimes. Okay, so we do have a donation to discuss today and I, two donations to discuss today. Who can introduce those to us and give some background?
Well, okay, do you, sure?
So then Eric has a cheer booster club and has made a donation of 18 full game slash competition uniforms and 25 warm-up jackets. They are valued at $4,492 for the uniforms and $1,930 for the jackets.
So we'll do these one at a time. I would entertain a motion to accept the donation. Then Eric has a cheer booster club of 18 full game competition uniforms valued at $4,492 and 25 warm-up jackets valued at $1,930. Motion by Danielle?
Second.
Second by Bill. Any questions or comments about that donation?
Still a big thank you.
Yes, huge thank you. All in favor? Opposed, abstained, and I say yes. So that is unanimous. And our next donation.
And next one was from our former, former Boot 4th grade teacher Christine Boudreau. She made two separate donations to Templeton Elementary School. One of them is $1,000 in memory of Curtis Emma for the direct purpose of replenishing the current Project Lead the Way program at the Templeton Elementary School. And also to accept a donation of $1,000 for the express purpose of purchasing laminating film rolls for the laminating machine on third floor in Templeton.
Very specific. That was very kind of her.
Somebody's got side information.
Someone does. I would entertain a motion to accept Mrs. Boudreau's donation of $1,000 in memory of Curtis Emma for the direct purpose of replenishing the current Project Lead the Way program at the Templeton Elementary School. And to accept the per further donation of $1,000 for the express purpose of purchasing laminating film rolls for the third floor laminating machine.
Second.
Motion by Danielle, second by Bill. Any question or comments about the donation?
Yeah, but thank you there. Thank you very much.
Absolutely. All in favor? Opposed, abstained, and I say yes. And if you could please extend our, the school committee's collective thanks and a note to both of those groups. We've, we deeply appreciate the work and the energy and thoughtfulness that went into those donations. And we are out of state field trip, Washington DC.
Yes, glad to hear. So this, you know, this comes up every year, obviously. The days have changed though, if you notice, it's just little, it's inside of June. By a week or so, it's traditionally, it's been around Memorial Day weekend, if, if memory serves. And it's, and it just has caused some scheduling issues with parents, graduations and such. So all the information, all the information is there for, for your review. That's the only notable change that, that I can see. I know Miss Lance is behind you, so.
Moving into June not only helped us locally, but it will help with reservations because a lot of the southern schools are out by then. And then they cut down a little bit of price.
And am I recalling correctly that last year we used a different company for the first time?
We did and because I, I've taken on the role of the advisorship this year. I talked to the former advisor and she wasn't exactly thrilled with the company. And she suggested that I go with this company this year if, if it was feasible. Nothing specific that was of, you know, concern. She just, you know, they weren't thrilled with all, a couple of.
They preferred the other program.
Yeah, so I love Bob Rogers. I've worked with Bob Rogers before. They're fantastic. They're very accommodating. And this year they introduced a new tab on their site where they can have people donate to their trip directly this week. It's like, so come eat, you know, an eighth grader, what do you get Auntie, you know, Auntie Sue, what are you going to get them for Christmas? And they don't know, donate to the trip. And they can go right onto the site, donate for the trip, which is why I'm kind of trying to get it passed tonight. So they have that.
Have that, yeah, especially with the holidays coming up. This is perfect.
So it's really a nice opportunity.
It's excellent. Thank you so much for noticing that and engaging with that, making sure that this got in front of us. So I would entertain a motion to approve the eighth grade out of state field trip to Washington DC for the proposed dates of June 8th to June 11th, 2026 as presented. So by Danielle, second by Peter this time. Any questions or comments about this field trip? Seeing none, all in favor? Opposed, abstained, and I say yes. So that is unanimous. It's really exciting. Thank you so much for organizing that. I, I'm already eagerly anticipating. I'm not being fair.
We're bringing, we're bringing back the dinner groups and the Danny the Fourth Theater.
Oh.
Which we have, so that's going to be something new and fun. Yeah, yeah.
Excellent. All right, Dr. C, superintendent's report.
I'm not going to bring it to the roof, um, at all. So just honestly, a couple of things I will bring up. I really do appreciate the folks who did show up at the special time meeting. It, it, you know, it wasn't, there wasn't a lot to folks, I guess, who attended. I think 60 some odd folks.
Sixty seven.
Was it? Okay.
It was 67, I think was the total.
Yeah, closer to 70, but the folks who did show up, they supported the school. It was almost, almost a unanimous. So, so I just wanted to make sure we thanked folks who did come out. Had some really great, honestly, a lot of great support. And I just wanted to make sure I said that for the right. Honestly, really a couple of things. Our cheerleaders, if they haven't won everything already, they're on their route to winning it all again. They're off to states this Saturday, against the Saturday. I will be there. I've bought my shirt of love. Just to make sure that you see that. It's supposed to be over the line, so I've got my shirt of love. But good luck to, to them. They, they've done fantastic through the, through the process so far, so I think fully have a good chance. From the, the district perspective, we, we're going to, we're going to show this to the finance facilities subcommittee. But our finance webpage for the, there's a finance, I guess, it's a page on our website that really highlights, and we talked about this, I think it was last spring, I think mostly, about where can we put every bit of financial information that we created so folks can review it. We found it. But I'm going to have Molly talk a little bit about how we've integrated.
So in addition to the budget information that Dr. C mentioned, as I mentioned to the committee last year and through various subcommittees, we adopted as a district, a district-wide platform for data analysis called Analytic View. We have more data than you can imagine in that platform. They have worked with us to customize a public access dashboard that includes budget information. So you can look at our budget in really easy to read spreadsheets and graphs longitudinally. I think we included the last five or six years of budget information there. You can toggle between a budget dashboard and a demographics dashboard where we're also providing public access to all of our enrollment data, including enrollment by grade, enrollment by school. We're including a couple of specialized populations that impact budgets, special education populations, EL populations. And it's, it's interactive, so people can scroll through and look at that. It is fixed, so as we add data on our end, it will automatically update, but people aren't able to adjust or modify it on their end. So it's a view-only dashboard and at the top, the people, like I said earlier, can toggle between budget data and enrollment data. Over time, we're hoping to add more data points to this for public access to increase transparency and data access for our community. But right now we are sticking with just budget data and enrollment data. It's taken us a while to work with our company to design the layout and ensure that our data is accurate as we're pushing this out to folks.
You know, want to make sure that, you know, show up to both Jared and Molly, really works. It was, you know, it was quite a process working with the company to get all of this information kind of away. And we're still working. We're still kind of tweaking this and, you know, literally colors and display to make sure that things make sense. But I think it's a great step forward. And if we can have a one-stop shopping place for all of our financial information, I think it goes back almost 10 years, I believe. You know, it'll, it'll certainly benefit folks who want information, but too, we'll get a lot of information. And we do generally around budget time, the, that's when we receive probably most of our, you know, current requests for information. So having it all in one spot, which is simply the, you know, just a matter of just pointing them to that website.
So I have a question. I have Anne Marie's incredible data collection over the past years. Made the development so much easier because she added all of these handcrafted spreadsheets she had built and been working off of. So I just want to make sure credit's given there too.
I'm just pulling them from quick.
I'm happy to.
You should be proud of that.
It is really, honestly, it's.
We can clap for you. We can clap for the elementary.
Yeah, so.
Serve it, gold star.
Can we, can we?
I admit we need glasses and don't want equipment. I need glasses. So I'm going to actually show folks how to get there right from our website itself. So if you're, if you're on the homepage of our website and you click on menu and go down to school committee, under that information, you'll see budget information. If you click on budget information, what you'll see here is our updated budget page, which includes a dropdown to all of the information Dr. Cassidine mentioned publicly accessible. And at the top, you'll find a button to access public data. When you click on the button, it will open up a new page. It'll bring you to our public dashboard for analytic view. It defaults to budget. And so what you'll see here is big picture, the overview of our budget history from fiscal year 17 to our current budget season. And then if you go down further, you'll see a breakdown by accounts over the last two, three, four, five years. Then you'll see a breakdown, I apologize, I'm going quickly. I know people are probably like, no, wait, I want to read all this data. You'll just have to go back and read it on your own time frame. For now, we're going to go pretty quick.
I know, it's not just me.
I know, I know, I'm shit. They share this love. You'll see information about our spending and receiving and the differential, our school choice funding, sending, receiving differential information over the years. We added information about our federal and state grants. So if you're interested in seeing the grant funds that come into the district over the years, you can see grant funding. You can also see state and local income sources over the years and how those have adjusted or shifted. And then that's also broken down at the town level. And then if you're interested in looking at the other dashboard, if you click at the top here where it says budget, you can toggle and switch to enrollment and demographics. And it does take just a minute to load. And here you'll see historic information and current information around our, our enrollment and our demographics. So here's our overall enrollment as a district over the years. Here's our current breakdown in enrollment by grade. This gets busy. You, you're going to definitely want to dig into this at home and really, really, you know.
Even seated a cup of coffee, my eyes keep out.
You'll see. You'll see, you know, enrollment by grade historically over various years and by grade. These are all interactive. And so what I mean by that is if you hover over these bars, you'll get specific numbers. If you want to look at a graph by just this graph, you can enlarge it here and you can download it here as well. So you have options on how, if you want to download it and then interact and adjust it in a spreadsheet version, you have options to do that as well. And then we went by school and then I'm going to give you whiplash for just a minute. And then you can see how our populations for our, our two major student groups that we are including in our strategic plan, but also that impact budgeting most, our EL population and our students with disabilities population. So you can see how those numbers have shifted and changed.
I have no notice. This is amazing.
We want to eventually add a tab, like, you know, we've talked about long-term adding the tab where we provide, you know, public, a public dashboard for academic data, a public dashboard for athletics, our enrollment in athletics and, and sports and so on and so on.
That, all right. But first things first, you know, that we're, you know, moving into budget season. So obviously we wanted to make sure this information was up and running. And again, it actually kind of, it does, not kind of, it corresponds with, we get to superintendent goals in a minute. But, you know, when we were, again, kind of circling around, what is communication and how do we communicate? Where, where can folks find information, just in general, not just finance? You know, the web, you know, our, our page is really, you know, needs to be a focus point, especially with our information. So this was a lot of, you know, a lot of hard work. We, we still wanted to add, we're still, you know, we're still tweaking some things, how things look. But if, if, as folks have maybe a suggestion or an idea, we're open. We've got contracts up here that are already out there that you were talking about a couple of weeks ago. We'll bring all the contracts there, you know, whether they be legal or.
Of the budget page, yeah. I know they're on the website.
They're on the website, but we might, again, we're looking where other things are just kind of where they're at. And again, we're, we're playing with it a little bit, you know, we don't want to make it so big that it's going to be, but.
Sure.
In any event, it's a great step forward.
Wonderful. Thank you so much. Anne Marie, I, I know the types of files that you keep and that definitely may be possible. So thank you very much. This, in addition to all the other jobs you hold, is much appreciated.
So we're in that, let me turn to you.
I'll pull up that too.
So to that, 10 years ago, honestly, when we came aboard, there was a lot of information, but no one knew where it was or how to access it. This, this, by the way, that's not Anne Marie. Anne Marie's always kept outstanding, you know, spreadsheets, et cetera. But with that webpage, and we'll get into the couple of them in a minute, but what that, what that certainly does, it ensures that this information, by some, you know, act of God, you know, will, will be around. So, you know, the newspaper, you know, the hospital, all of its information is locked up. And, you know, in terms of some type of cyber issue, obviously the webpage is a cyber, you know, it's a world wide web. But we don't want to have more information only really besides, you know, in one location, especially when it comes to finance. So, or a lot of other things. So the last, at least the last seven years, we've really been working hard to make sure that it's been more, more public in, in multiple places that people actually know where it's about. So when we start talking about goals, you know, what we've traditionally done probably the last, boy, at least seven, eight years, is that we really tied them to whether it be the DCEP or this improvement plan over the years. Because those, you know, the goals that move the district really are the superintendent's and the assistant superintendent's goals.
And DCEP, for those of us who are new to that acronym.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Right. So.
The district's schools.
Strategic.
Strategic improvement plan. Thank you. I was like, I'm going to get this one wrong.
So, thank you. I was going to, I was, I was, we had that. It's on the acronym page, which we'll reshare with folks. So in looking at, you know, much of this, none of it should be a surprise. These are things that we have been actively working on through the planning process. We've, we've reported out on multiple occasions in regards to the DCEP or the district improvement plan, wherever it may be. But I'm actually going to have to pull this up today. So in terms of the, you know, the student learning goal, my junior 27 will identify and address student needs across the academic social emotional domains, ensure equitable educational opportunities for all students to increase the percentage of students at upper grade level ELA and math five, five percent on the district benchmark assessments. I, I, I won't bore you with, with the focus indicators are, but they're, they're there. It is a link if you want to go check out other focus indicators from those, from those areas. Our second, or my second student learning goal would be my junior 27. Our second, or my second student learning goal would be by June twenty seventh, we'll narrow the G gap between students with disabilities and all students on district benchmark assessment and CAS. This was, this is something that we carry over from, you know, from the last plan. We've been working on this while we really didn't hit the mark. And we, you know, so we are keeping it as one of my goals or art because we need to improve there. And we, you know, and so that's, that is something that folks or the disinformation definitely, you know, be familiar with. If been here long enough to see these two goal sites. So the district's improvement goal by June twenty seventh will develop, rule out district-wide, rule warrior, outlining the skills, knowledge and values a community holds for all Dancis graduates. And so this is, this will be, you know, this will be actually a great thing to accomplish once we have this completed. What does it, what does one of our graduates or look, what, what, what skills and where have they been and where are they going? And so it's more commonly known as a portrait of graduate. You've heard, I'm sure you've, you've heard that at least, if you haven't, it's very, it's a, it's a very common thing. Most districts do have, you know, those. And so we are, our community will create that. And parallel to the conversation that you just saw, would be webpage, which is a finance webpage. But continue to strengthen timely response of collaborative and inclusive internal and external communication. Molly and I talked for about an hour about this goal because it's been one of, it's been a, it's been a point of frustration only from the sense that we believe that we've made a lot of gains in this area. Given any point in time in the past. So, you know, if I were to say, don't you ever have a webcam, but you can't go too far back. But we're constantly trying to figure out, to improve the way we communicate. But to really almost, and I don't wanna use the word force, that's a bad word. But we wanna, we certainly want to make it easier and we really need to get our community more engaged in what we're doing. It may be anything, sure, finances, but of course, the educational piece, athletics, like literally the arts. And we're, you know, we've leaned on Facebook, you know, we've done YouTube-ish type things in terms of, you know, whether it be videos, Anne does a fantastic job with running the page about just all of the wonderful things that we do, all the events, whether it be on the sign outside, you know, or in the lobbies if you're, if you're here, you see them on our TV screens. But, you know, Facebook has been one of the primary ways that we are broadcasting to the greater community. Of course, all of the building principals have their own, you know, letter, principal's letter they send out weekly that they, of course, send out to their, their schools. But we're looking for better and more efficient ways to do that. And so we decided to keep this goal because we don't think that, we don't think that it hit the mark with some of the feedback that I received last June, it was May or June, we talked about that. So we're, we're gonna delve into this a little bit more. So that's one example. Two, the video about the roof. Again, it's not a funny video. It's, I don't know anything about roofs, folks. But we were with our, you know, with our facilities director, Keith, and, you know, he brought us around and I should say Susan, who also climbed up on the roof as well to do the video. But, you know, it was important for us to see, you know, what are some of these issues, but we're pointing them out. We're gonna blast that out. We're gonna ask for TCTV's, you know, assistance to see what we need to make that happen to the cable folks and, and actually, I don't know, it's Phillips and Cable, or, you know, get that out there. So we can just really saturate the community with the information that we need to get out there. We sent a letter through the newsletter about the roof project through the newsletter in Phillipsden. We've, we've, we've put information in there before. We generally wouldn't be looking for this or so. That's where we're gonna, we're gonna embark on some different things this year, completely different, see if, if, you know, information was reaching the community in a more efficient, more efficient way.
Now, I think, I'm glad that you brought that up because I think that is a frustrating goal because it's one of those community targets, right? I think it'll be a constantly moving target because you'll prove one area of communication or methods of communication will change over time. Because, I mean, was Facebook the dominant mechanism for reporting news X number of years ago? Probably not, and so on and so forth. So it's, I, I, A, recognize the struggle with that constant moving target and we appreciate that we're keeping it on there because it is important that we learn how to reach folks. Because when I was at the Templeton Town Meeting, I, I, we were definitely dinged on the fact that of the sixty-seven people that showed up there, me, I am estimating, I did not count, maybe seven to ten of them were parents. So we really didn't have a showing of the parents of kids in the district. Now, being fair, fall town meeting, I think, has less knowledge about it than spring. You know, it's, it is a difficult time to accommodate for being at six P M. And, you know, I was quite honest, that as a school committee member, I am, I am bound by law the ways that I can engage and try to get parents to do things. But that doesn't mean that we can't, that we stop being creative and stop looking for new ways. So I think as a whole, yeah, I agree, we need to find, I think the key is, how do we find that tipping point of not just communicating, but also getting people engaged? And that is, that is a tipping point challenge. So it's one thing to know information, but another thing to get people to come to the event or to, you know, come to their town meeting or et cetera, et cetera. And I think it's a common problem across towns. I don't think it is specific to us that there are certain generations of people that know about and understand, go and consistently support town meeting. And then there are other generations of folks that either don't know, which is legitimate, there's a lot of people who don't know or understand town meetings or can't find a way to accommodate it or think their vote doesn't count for some reason. So.
It's intimidating and we've heard that plan, that the town meeting is an intimidating process, if you've never been through.
There's no difference, though.
The clickers, I was just gonna say, the clickers.
In Templeton, they have invested in voting clickers. So you no longer have to stand up and say yes or no. You have a clicker and you click yes or you click no. And so your vote is anonymous instead of having to declare, I'm voting this way. And a lot, a lot, a lot of sensitive votes. I have absolutely seen a significant number of people in that room just decide to vote nothing because they're afraid to stand up and say they vote one way or another. So I think that was a great investment by Templeton because the comfort level of voting being anonymous, when you go to ballot, it's anonymous. And when you go to town meeting, you're like, I vote this way on this very sensitive topic. And that's hard, especially when you have to stand up and they have to count you. So.
And recount.
Anne Marie to count.
Now, that was really, the town which I live in has had clickers for a while. And I will say that, so I've experienced it now, say, four or five years. It's made with, not only, it makes the meeting go quicker because recounts aren't necessarily needed. Although I suppose someone could recount your thicker vote, I'd ask, but I'm sure they could. But it's pretty, it's pretty, we moved it along. So.
You don't have to subjectively tell whether or not it was two friends of the group. Volume of House of Roots.
Yep.
So coming back to goals specifically, this is not something we need to take an action on at this time or we do. Typically, the school committee does vote to approve, I believe, if you have a pass. But I'm not sure if it's going to do that this evening with this information.
In general, you, or you're getting voted to next month. I mean, again, it doesn't have to vote today. You know, if you need time to review and to, you know, to think about it, obviously, it doesn't.
I would say that I did not put it on as a vote. So in honor of how the agenda is set up, we'll vote on it next month, however, in terms of, but they're very much in alignment with how we need to move forward. So we will do an official vote in December. But note that I'm not seeing anyone not speak up in this case with experience of our folks. So I'm excited to, and I know that the super chief is working towards to make these more measurable. So I'll do it. So thank you for that. Okay, there's nothing that we did not anticipate for this meeting, school committee comments. I just wanted to share that in the middle school, my son has been doing a book club. And never in all the years that he has been, he's read many books with school, but never in all those years has he tried to engage me in talking about the book. And I will tell you, I have not read The Outsiders in a very long time. But every night, he's been asking me, do you remember this or do you remember that? And I was like, I am so impressed with how he's come home. Not only are they engaging with each other, not, not every student is reading The Outsiders, let's just be clear. But that has been really exciting and impressive because as every parent at this table knows, the answer you usually get when you say, how was your day? Fine. Did anything interesting happen? Nothing. And speaking about books is my love language. So I'm just delighted as a parent.
Impressive. You still get full words at least.
I know.
It gets.
So what is this book club? Do they have it in?
They're separate. Yeah, they have it in class. They're separated into groups. They're expected to read, I guess. I don't know the full mechanism of it, but they're expected to read a certain amount. And then they have to share and discuss what they read in their small groups in their classroom. And he is fairly engaged with reading this particular book, in part, I think, because of that set. Like I said, he's read other books and I have, I've forgotten to discuss them as much as I've gotten to discuss The Outsiders. Although I did not remember anything about Tony Boy or anything. I was like, I know that was the name. I remember reading the book. I saw the movie. So I will have to study, I think. So I just wanted to say how delightful that was and how great it is to hear about different types of learning being incorporated and very well fit in your walk through. So. All right, subcommittee and committee reports. Last someone else has commented.
We're tired. We're tired.
So we had our finance and facilities meeting last week. Major highlights would be, we did discuss the delightful new project outside of the middle school entryway being that there seems to be a sinkhole. And so that entryway is closed off for now. And so we're reading to, I guess, what's gonna be.
World of Business Week.
Week. Okay. So fingers crossed everyone, that one doesn't come in too high, but we're all with all things. And we also discussed that, oh gosh, what's the name of the insurance cooperative that came in?
Oh, it's Master Strategic.
Master Strategic asked to come in and speak with, they led the meeting to, and asked specifically to speak with the district in Templeton, et cetera.
And they want to form a smaller JPA within the Master Strategic group. They, they're aiming for four small groups within the bigger group. And they've already done one that's down Webster direction. So now they're kind of considering this, like, the North Central One. And basically, they want you to be a group of like a thousand or more in the members. So as a group in Master Strategic, each, like, we negotiate our prices for narrative. It's directly with them. Templeton does theirs. And it's, it's all over the place, which isn't a bad thing. But your claims, if you have really bad claims, those are all yours. By forming these little groups, the claims kind of get spread out. And eventually, you will work towards the same plan design, the same rates. And hopefully, in the future, by doing this, maybe we can see rate increases that are not double digits in the future. But it's not going to happen in any way. But that will even the goal, get that new something that's like around the five percent mark.
And then I'm trying to pull it up so that I can get the information correct. But we additionally discussed the increases that have been confirmed for the, I don't like to believe people test this to me.
It's for the UFCW retirees.
Yes.
Stand sixty-three percent increase and those rates are holding up.
Thank you. I'm sure it does. Yeah, so sixty-three percent rate increase. And that is, that is gonna hurt.
Yes, yes.
So, you know. Bunch of seasons should be.
Just to put it into perspective, we have about twenty-five of those retirees. Because UFCW, if you don't know, is the custodians of cafeteria, Paris secretary. So there isn't as many retirees in that group as the teacher group. But it still hurts.
District operations.
So at the very beginning of November, Dr. C let us know that he is working through, is completing the area admin salary survey that he does every couple of years. Hopefully, in the next meeting, we'll have, I think you had almost everything, maybe still missing quite a bit, but you were getting close to finishing that. So we could take a look at it. We also talked about the UFCW sixty-two percent increase for the entire. Dr. C gave us an update or a report out from the all chairs meeting. That was the first one for this year. It's nice that we're able to do that again and bring together all the chairs of the town agencies to start talking about all these important things as we head into budget season, so that there are surprises. We have, we looked at the competency determination policy again because we knew it was coming back to the poll committee for a second reading. We decided to leave the cell phone, a cell phone policy as like an open item for discussion because we, we don't know what is going to happen yet in the state, from the state. So just sort of to be able to touch base if anything new has come about. I did put on our agenda to take a look at, NASC recommended an adjustment to the KBB relations with parent boosters organization policy. And we actually didn't have a policy that had much to do with our boosters. We have some fundraising policies. And so we'll continue to talk about that. Molly gave us an update on where we are in terms of the NEAS accreditation process or admit process. Last year, started orientation. And this year, they're working through all of the conferences that, did they start? Maybe they did start, you told us that already. And so they're working through that process. Also, the early college program is in some review. And Molly told us about the AIR, AIR organization that Desi's partnered with that they're gonna come in and do the, and to do the review.
Labor management committee, we did have a work environment meeting. Can't remember the end of last month. And a good meeting, three of the four groups represented there had come. So it was nice to connect with everyone and talk. Big focus there is how do we get the U F C W contract is up for renewal. And so working diligently to try to get some traction on that. And U F C W members are, I want to be clear, very much pushing to get that going and just hoping to coordinate some calendars there. Nothing with the labor, nothing with the, this time. C P A. Nothing to report. Okay. P T O, Sean's not here this time. Student Advisory Council?
Nothing new.
Nothing new. Okay. And legislative.
Oh, let's see. The top administration has decided that they are going to start assigning some of the roles of the Department of Education to other agencies. And so see the, basically, everything K through twelve is going to be assigned to the Office of Labor Relations. What is it? Management? Hold on. Where's my little cheat sheet here? Department of Labor, sorry. And so, and they'll be overseeing all of the entitlement grants, like Title One. So doesn't sound like there'll be any interruption, but it will be paid out of a different agency. So it sounds like I D E A and the Department of Special Education is going to, or the Office of Special Education is staying with the Department of Education for now, but the plan is to transfer that to Health and Human Services. Which is unfortunate because doing with disabilities have nothing to do with insurance. That's just my take. And we'll see what happens as everything becomes dismantled and education as we know it changes.
Yeah, there's a lot, there's a lot of nervousness in our towns as well about how things are going to be, how those major federal grants are going to be funded because special education is a very big line item and making sure that that continues to be well funded, but also that there is advocacy for those students, ensuring those students continue to have that equal access to education. So there's a lot of nervousness in the education community around what do these changes mean and what does this mean for access to those experts and those resources? And most importantly, what does this mean for those kids that are benefiting from that access and those resources? So this, this is a question we get a lot around what happens if Title One goes away or what happens if I D E A goes away and so, so forth. So lots of, lots of unknowns and lots of uncertainty and discomfort, lots of questions. There's no correspondence this evening. Our next meeting date is Thursday, December eighteenth. We do not need executive session this evening. And so I would entertain a motion to adjourn. Motion by me.
Second.
Second by Bill. Take turns. All in favor. Thank you, everyone. We appreciate your time this evening.